So now for our final panel, I'm thrilled that we're able to host three of our five LA County Board of Supervisors for discussing women's leadership in California. Please welcome back Emmy Award winning moderator and journalist, anchor and producer, and founder of Futuro Media Group Maria Inahosat, and Supervisor Catherine Barker, Supervisor Sheila Kuehl, and Supervisor Holly Mitchell.
Hey, what's up, everybody? So yeah, thank you for this honor of inviting me to moderate this particular panel, because I'm one of the people who, you know, way back when, and I didn't know what a County Board of Supervisors was, because we don't have one in New York. And I remember just like, a County Board of Supervisors? Like, what's that? And it was just the most powerful people in the state of California. And I was just like, really? And my ears perked up. So that's the way, when people don't understand who you are, that's the way it's understood. And so I'm really excited to be with the three of you, because since its inception 150 years ago, this is the first time that it's all women. So you are being watched, both good and bad. And it's an extraordinary moment in history. So Supervisor Barker, let's start with you. You know, I'm also a media entrepreneur. I'm a journalist. I'm a media entrepreneur. And so this whole notion of how you kind of manage a team, how you manage staff, how you manage working together, I used to think that managing was like, eh, who cares? It's so easy. As you know, it's really complicated. And when you come to something like the, you know, Board of Supervisors, it can be intense, right? So how do you bridge, how do you, how do you bridge that difference and make it into something productive?
Well, that's a good question. And I think COVID, first of all, I love seeing my colleagues. We're not able to meet in person, so it's great to see two amazing women that I serve with. COVID really has heightened just how difficult it is to, to, to communicate. I've noticed it in real time. When you see someone, and Supervisor Kuehl and I have talked about this, sometimes things get lost in translation. But, you know, with this board, each of us has different views, backgrounds, and ideas, as does my staff, because I want staff that is going to give me different ideas and different thoughts as it relates to whatever we're working on. But we all work together to respect one another and to collaborate. And I think collaboration is the key. And for me personally, it's about working together to achieve what we all want, and that's what's best for LA County residents. And this board collaborating together has been pre-Supervisor Mitchell, but now post-Supervisor Mitchell, very successful in furthering agendas that quite frankly, for many years, sat on the bookshelves and were not addressed. And so my style is surrounding myself with people that are of not of like minds in order to help me to do a better job representing my constituency in the fifth district.
So Supervisor Kuehl, I've talked a lot about how those of us in New York are watching always, California, LA in particular. We won't get into which is better, because they're both fabulous. Let's just say that. But one of the things that we're always watching, of course, is what's going to happen with women? So what are the most pressing issues post-pandemic, or we're in it, that you're looking at for women in California?
Well, you know, it's, it's a matter of a gender lens, because the pressing issues for women often are the big issues with which we're dealing. Let's say healthcare. You know, we are, if we were a state, we'd be the eighth largest state. We've got 10 million people living here. We're wanting to vaccinate every one of them. We've had to take care of hospitalization and health. And for women, women are often the major coordinators of care for their families, for their extended families, then if they think about it for themselves. Not to mention that there are many of our essential workers in healthcare and have spent a lot of their time preparing and taking care of others. So we want to put a gender lens on healthcare, and that's one of the very big issues for women. The second, shelter, really, and I don't mean temporary shelter. I mean, the larger sense of homelessness and housing. Women often are, we've seen lately, in the last year, that the highest percentage of growth in the homeless population are women, and many of them older women. Even though we've put in eviction moratoria and everything we can, women are suffering more from having to look for housing and having to work to maintain it. The third leg of the stool, if you like, is always work and jobs. So we have to see what's the gender lens about women? And the big issue is childcare, 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 so that women can work. But also, 150,000 women lost their jobs last December. 600 men gained jobs in December. So when you think about it, every lost job in America was women. And it is something we have to pay a lot of attention to and are.
Supervisor Mitchell, can you, can you paint a picture of what it's like to be working together with women on the board? You know, I have this extraordinary experience now that when I created my own nonprofit media company 11 years ago, it's basically been working with women in senior leadership throughout. And I don't, I don't have to remember back over a decade ago, when I had to kind of work with men, pitch my stories to men, most of whom were straight, or presenting straight, heterosexual, of privilege, white. And with my group of women, most of whom are of color, we just make things happen. Even when we have deep differences, we just kind of go there and then we move on. And I'm just wondering, if you would Supervisor Mitchell, talk a little bit about that dynamic in, in, in the board? How you work together as, as a collective of women?
Thank you, Maria. I appreciate it. Hello to Emerald. Congratulations on the release of the report. And of course, to President McElhenney Johnson, thanks for convening us. You know, Maria, as you talked about that, I realized that has been my experience most of my professional career. My first real job out of my Coral Foundation Fellowship was working for then-state Senator Diane Watson, who, who really helped frame for me what it felt like to be, to work for a strong woman, to be supported and nurtured in my early career. I will forever be indebted for that early orientation that she gave me. I then went to the California Black Women's Health Project. I worked for the Western Center Law and Poverty. And then I was at Crystal Stairs, nonprofit child development agency that was founded by two women of color. And so when I think back over my career, I had been very fortunate that women and strong women leaders, and women who weren't afraid to acknowledge that women lead differently, and were really okay with that, were really my early employers and supporters. So I have to tip my hat and thank, thank them for that professional life experience. You know, onboarding in the middle of a public health pandemic ain't easy. And so I think, as Catherine said, you know, I literally have not been physically with my sitting colleagues one time. We meet via Zoom. We talk in open session and closed session, you know, via the Brady Bunch boxes like we are here today. And so I'm looking forward to the opportunity to actually share space with all of them. But you know, I listened to the previous panel with Michaela and Jane, and realized that, that, that women are tired of waiting. I don't know about my two colleagues. They're probably also tired of answering the question about how do women lead differently? And how will it be different? We lead. I think that we have a deep sensibility to the unique needs of our constituents. I am a mother. I think about the fact that, you know, I was a perfect sandwich generation. I lost both parents when my son was school age. And so I was, I directly experienced with so many of my constituents experience in terms of trying to balance being a working mother and a caretaker for my aging parents. And so I think that we, in our ordinary life experience, understand the dynamics that our constituents experience every day, and we govern, we govern from that space. And so as Sheila talked about, the priorities that we're going to be focusing on as a board to help lead 10 million people through and out of this dual pandemic, a public health and economic pandemic, and build an LA county that was stronger before a year ago March, I think that will be our shared focus and commitment. That's what women do. We roll up our sleeves and we get to work.
It's like we just don't, this whole thing about be patient, we don't really have, we don't do so well with the be patient kind of thing.
Well, we just, you know, you know, there's too much work to do. I think the unique thing about elected bodies that have significant numbers of women, we are unique, you know, first of its kind, I believe, in the country. To be all female is we don't get stuck on some of those kind of, you know, ego-driven sophomore kind of issues. There is more work to be done that any of us could hope to accomplish individually. So we understand collectively, we're stronger. There's more work to be done that anybody can or should try to take credit for. So we just get it done. And I think that's what makes an elected body of all women unique, and quite frankly, beneficial to our shared constituency.
So Supervisor Kuehl, or Barker, I just wanted, before we move on, I wanted to ask you whether or not you wanted to jump in, because you are being watched, obviously. But then again, you know, I was the first in so many of my, in, in all of the roles that I was in. And I never really thought about being watched, because I was too busy doing the work. But do you want to chime in on this notion?
I would just echo what Supervisor Mitchell said. I mean, women lead, and we're good at multitasking, to her point, dealing with her parents and, you know, single mom raising a child, and still putting food on the table. This is what we're wired to do. And so quite frankly, it's no different than what we do each and every day in our lives. We're good at juggling, and I'm proud of that. And I think that, again, is what makes this board so incredible, is we all come from different backgrounds with different lenses, looking at issues and looking at it holistically, with the, with the goal of making real-time change, not studying to the point of where it never gets done. We, we look at it, we see what we need to do, and then we plan and move it forward. And I, and I think, I know that is why this board has been so successful moving forward agenda items.
I would only add that we're very decisive, and it doesn't take us long to get to a decision. When I first came on the board, one of the men said of one of the other, "We're at war." And then I heard that a couple of weeks later from another man on the board, talking about some man on the board, "We're at war." You would never hear us say, "We're at war." We, it's not that we're wussy about anything. We are very strong in our beliefs. But the way we work through to get to the, you know, to the decision is very important. And it's extremely important, because this is five people. No legislature, no governor, just five people making a decision for essentially one out of every 35 people in America. That's who lives here. And it is, you know, it's a joy. And even when we struggle, we do it well. We don't back away. We do it well, but we don't have to score points against each other. We don't have to be at war. It's really important.
I, I actually think this is really an important notion, that, that women have the capacity to put the ego to the side, honestly, when there's work to be done. I had the benefit, this, I think it's one of the highlights of my life, is it was to be able to interview Michelle Bachelet, then-president of Chile, first female president in Chile. And she's a medical doctor. And she said, "Look, I'm dealing, I know how to deal with an emergency. I'm a medical doctor. If I have to, you know, make a cut with the scapula, I'm there. But I like to actually govern by hearing many different perspectives, and by making a kind of informed coalition decision. If I have to, I'll make the decision." And I think that that's really an extraordinary way to, to put it. So, so what are we, what are you most concerned about? What is keeping you up at night? Let's start with you, Commissioner Mitchell. You're shaking your head. Yeah, so this is the part where I don't like what I'm going to hear. Because again, what you are dealing with in California, we will deal with soon. So what are the things that are really worrisome and keeping you up in terms of women?
I appreciate that. You know, I am clear that women and girls have suffered disproportionately under COVID, nationwide, certainly here in LA County, and certainly in my district. That keeps me up at night, making sure that women and girls who have suffered in terms of job loss, who suffer in terms of housing insecurity, food insecurity, access to appropriate healthcare services, those are the issues that keep me up at night. And what we're going to do to take advantage of this moment in time, this unique moment in time, with this influx of federal dollars coming in, to build and rebuild a county that will serve them that better than they were experiencing life in LA County than before. It's a daunting task, but it's a task that I tend, and I'm sure my colleagues do as well, intend to be focused on to make sure that we take advantage of this opportunity. You know, before I joined the board, the board was brilliant and came up with a women and girls initiative that has been working tirelessly for the last several years to come up with a set of policies that help dictate to us the needs of women in LA County, women who work for LA County, women and girls who live in LA County. Abby Lann is the executive director. And their report that they gave to the board recently talked about childcare. You know, that's the industry that I come from prior to running for public office. The caring industries, Sheila, as our friend Deion Aaron are referred to, you know, you know, providing for elders, in-home support services workers, childcare, those in the healthcare industry, all the human services. You know, we've got to make sure that those services and programs are funded to support the needs of women and girls. Like Jane said, we're not going to be patient. And quite frankly, these issues aren't new. None of the issues and challenges that women and girls are experiencing in the midst of COVID are unique to COVID. Those were challenges that were confronting us before. And so I think that COVID has taken the, the blindfold off of the world. And hopefully, created an opportunity for everyone to pause for a moment, think outside of ourselves and our own life experience, and think about our sister, our family, friends, and neighbors, and how this pandemic has impacted them. And I think that's going to create an opportunity for not only government to step up to the plate in a meaningful way, for government to work across jurisdiction, federal, state, county, municipalities, to come together and collaborate in a unique and powerful way to meet the needs of our shared constituency. Those are the issues that keep me up at night. But when I have those aha moments, I'm able to close my eyes and get a few more winks. So I'm charged up and ready to come out swinging the next morning.
I, I do think it is a way in which we, as women, often have to take, we, we make lemonade out of lemons, right? I mean, we're kind of expert at that. And a way in which we can take a particular narrative and flip it, which, so I kind of like, one of the commissioners, you said, and I'm tired about having to talk about how women do things, because we just do it. And it's like, I kind of get that, right? We, we don't really have to talk about it, just like we're bear witness. But in terms of women having the capacity to take something and kind of flip it, I'm just going to share a personal story and then throw it back to you, which is, I went to get my first vaccine, and it turned out I got it, my first vaccine shot in the South Bronx, in the heart of the South Bronx, in a grammar school. And the person giving me my shot was, like me, an immigrant. She's from Ghana. Her name was Dee Dee. And I was crying. I was in a state of, I'm just so scared, and so many memories, and so much loss, and all of this. And she just said, with her beautiful accent from Ghana, she said, "This is our freedom shot. This is our freedom shot." And Harriet Tubman has a statue not far from here. And I used to, when I would be out and about walking, I don't go out and about walking anymore. I would stop and I would think about Harriet Tubman's liberation dreams. That were it not for Harriet Tubman, having her dreams to imagine something else in this country, we wouldn't be where we are. And so I'm wondering a little bit about your own liberation dreams. I know that Supervisor Barker, you're, you look kind of gorgeous in your suit, and with all the formal flags behind you, I have to say. But can you take us to your liberation dreams, your freedom dreams?
Wow, that, that, that is a, that's a deep question, and, and a good one. And actually, I did clean up today. Usually I have blue jeans on, and that's one of the byproducts of COVID. So I cleaned up.
Catherine, we don't know.
I know, I know. And I'm in my office.
Well, I tell you what I don't have on, and that's I don't have on any space. I'll tell you that, Catherine, no thanks.
But I have to say, who loves Holly's background? I do. I never get tired of seeing Rosa Parks behind her. It's phenomenal. But, you know, I have to say, as someone, my experience has been, in my career, was starting with a county 35 years ago. And when Supervisor Kuehl talks about how the men would say, "We're at war", imagine a 28-year-old coming into an all-man-run county. And I'm not exaggerating. And I would have ideas that I thought were the second coming and the greatest. And I'd be shot down with, "Well, you don't know what you're talking about. You, you don't understand how the county works." And, and so for me, that actually made me even more focused, and I say laser-focused to change. And I figured, if you, if you can't beat him, you join him. So I literally infiltrated the bureaucracy of the county, working for an elected. I went into the departments and got to know the departments, and worked from basically within to push the agendas forward. And, and so it was, it was an aha moment for me, recognizing that, that I would continue to be patted on the head and told, you know, "Yeah, that's a good idea. Go sit over there." And, and I realized that if I didn't use my voice and speak up, and I, and I had a boss that actually supported me 100% to do that. And actually, I think he enjoyed watching me rattle some cages. It was, it was liberating for me to bring forward these, what we call motions every Tuesday the board meets. And we bring motions forward that really can, in real time, say, "Next week, you're going to do XYZ." And it's not, you know, has to go through the legislature and the governor. These are done in real time. And it was liberating for me to bring forward motions, for example, on mental health, that could basically, with the stroke of one pen, make a difference and change lives moving forward. And so I got the last laugh on many of those men that were running the department, because now I'm proud to say that through this board, we have more women running our departments than ever before in the history of the county. And by the way, our chief executive office, which in essence is the CEO of one of the biggest companies in this country, is a female. And, and so, you know, I think the last laugh is on all those in the old boys' network that, that kind of thought we were just going to sit back and, and mind our manners.
I want to second that completely. Here's the other one great life lesson that my father, may he rest in peace, who helped to create the cochlear implant. He was pretty much a little genius. But he said to me, "Don't burn your bridges," right? And, and that's really interesting, because women are in these positions where they are being asked to be CEOs of organizations and companies that have failed under men, because they didn't know how to handle corporate culture, because they didn't know how to stop misogyny or racism, et cetera. And so women are suddenly finding themselves like, hey, wait a second. I know you. Let's do this together. So I think it's a fascinating moment. So what are you most concerned about, Commissioner Kuehl? What are the things that, you know, for you are particularly of concern for women? And, and how are you thinking about managing that?
You know, Holly was talking about what keeps her up at night, and that kind of is a similar question. Two of the things we haven't talked about, one of them has to do with how the depth of the justice movement, which has taken a great deal of root and leadership in LA County, and with which we very, very much agree, creating alternatives to incarceration and setting up an entire office to do that, keep people out of jail that don't really need to be in jail, don't thrive there, don't learn anything from it, that kind of punishment. And I worry a lot about the girls in our juvenile system, making certain that they have the kinds of opportunities that we think about sometimes giving boys in terms of the construction industry and helping with training, and things that, you know, we have thought about as kind of a boy thing in the past. Also, older women, the way older women are suffering through this pandemic, isolation, hunger, all of those things that are, again, you know, keeping me up at night. And so what we're doing about it, just like Catherine and Holly have both said, this is, it's not lightning fast, but this is, I was in the state assembly. Like Holly, I was in the state senate. This is, as Catherine said, you bring a motion on Tuesday, and it says, "Report back in 45 days." And 45 days, we get a report back, and it says, "Here's the things we can do." And we bring a motion that day and say, "That's what we're going to do." We have a $38 billion budget. I mean, this is one of the major economies in the world. And we, the five of us, allocate that $38 billion. So there are things we can do, things that we're frustrated by. But I think the, the real challenges are to, that government itself, given the right-wing movement in this country over the past 35 years, it has been starved to death, and local government the worst. Tax cut, tax cut, tax cut, taxes cut for the rich, mostly. What are taxes for? That's what we're able to spend money on. So we want to build more housing. We don't have the taxes coming in. It's not just the pandemic. It's the movement against paying a fair share. And so we are all part of this movement to try to make certain that government can fulfill, especially now, the responsibilities that everyone suddenly realizes, "We're the last man standing," so to speak. And we're the ones they've turned to for help. So we're going to do it.
Supervisor Mitchell, I, you know, we have to acknowledge that we're having this conversation in the midst of a highly charged moment in our country. And I think we were all around when there was the trial of the LAPD where Rodney King was beaten. And I think we remember what that was like. And I'm wondering how you manage when you're thinking about structural racism, and, you know, and dealing with police institutions that, you know, the other morning, sadly, I woke up and there was a, I mean, I don't like to watch these videos, but it was a video of a woman being killed by a fellow police officer in the south of Mexico, a Salvadoran woman, killed by a woman police officer kneeling on her back and breaking her neck. And so I'm just, you know, there is this kind of structural racism and a real questioning of institutions like the police. And I'm wondering how you're grappling that when you have a pretty intense amount of power?
I appreciate that question, Maria. And, and that's a question that we all have a responsibility for answering. You know, I have to tell you, I was struck when I saw a colleague, Representative Park Cannon, sitting, elected official from the Atlanta, from the Georgia House of Representatives, being escorted out of her workplace, Georgia State Capitol, because she was knocking on the door of the governor, who was signing a bill that will severely limit voters' rights, signing a bill in a room flanked by six other men with this amazing portrait behind him of a plantation. I mean, you know, if I were writing a Hollywood script, I wouldn't be brave enough to make it that blatant. It's just amazing. And then I wake up these last two days, and I see these young women who stood their ground and did their best to challenge law enforcement and had the wherewithal to hold their phones and film it so the world could see the murder of Mr. Floyd. That young woman who videoed that was 17 years old. The young firefighter who had the wherewithal to challenge the judge yesterday, when she felt he cut her off, and she wanted to answer the full question and tell her story. Those were very young women. And I don't know where they found the courage in that moment in time to stand their ground and do all they felt they could do to defend him, to, to try to challenge law enforcement, but most importantly, bear witness for us all to understand what happened in that moment. And these aren't new images, Maria, and it's not new. My parents were around during the Watts Rebellion. And I remember growing up, hearing the aftermath, and experiencing the, the communal response and revolution that happened in terms of the building of institutions attempting to make the lives better and to create a sense of equity for people who were disenfranchised. I read the report, the McCone Commission report that came out of the Watts Rebellion. If we had done all the things that were recommended in the McComb Commission report, Maria, we could have avoided the '92 uprising. If we had done and invested and took questions and issues of equity seriously after the '92 uprising, we might not be here today. So the question is, at what point will it stop? With whom will it stop? Will it stop with us? In terms of understanding the systemic impact of racism, sexism, misogyny, and the interplay, particularly for women and girls, women of color, that those have on each other? And what we must do, the collective we, not only those of us in the public sector and government, but all of us, the collective we, must do to end it. I believe we have the capacity and the power, hopefully now the courage and the political will to really dismantle various institutions that represent systemic racism. The LA County Board of Supervisors has begun to do that with their Women and Girls Initiative, with their anti-racism and their anti-black initiative. That's going to look inside in terms of county operations as well as external. Everyone has a responsibility to do that in a meaningful and significant way. You know, equity has become, you know, the 13-point word of our time. You know, you can't hear anyone speak about police excessive use of force, the pandemic, our economic challenges, without using the term equity. The issue will be how we operationalize that. And if we elevate equity in a meaningful way, in a very real way, that will begin to dismantle systemic racism in law enforcement, in employment, in housing, in education, in all of the systems as we know them.
And it would just really be just for a much better country, frankly. Supervisor Mitchell, I heard you when you said, "It's not only for me to answer the question on the issue of structural racism." So I heard you and you're right. So I want to throw this to end up to Supervisor Kuhl and Supervisor Barger. One, to talk about how you understand your role as an ally on the issue of structural racism. And, you know, we are able to name things like we never could before. White supremacy? In a, I mean, things have certainly changed, but we have a long way to go. So we've got, as we're wrapping up, I want you to answer this particular question about structural racism, each one of you. And then we're going to wrap up with the silver linings, things that we can look forward to. So Supervisor Kuhl, we'll start with you.
Well, I think, you know, when I first went into activism in the 70s, I kept hearing about how a minority was creating a problem by naming it. You know, why were black people always talking about racism? Why were women always talking about sexism? And I thought, well, because you're not. And now, really, I think our responsibility is, I am the person who should be talking about white supremacy because it's my race that's causing the problem. And so for us to say, "I'm part of the solution, I must be part of the solution." First, I have to name it, then I have to be an ally. But I don't always, I hope this is okay to say, I don't always have to wait for someone else to lead. I mean, it is okay for me to say, "Here's something that we can do as anti-racists." And I'm going to talk to mine, but I'm going to talk to everybody. And I think it's really important to take the responsibility. That's what happens, and I can't wait till we're all together on the dais again because something will be said and women make eye contact with each other. They look and go, "Ah, I agree with that." I mean, we're kind of doing it now where somebody says something cool and we're going like, "Yeah, yeah." But there, this country was built essentially on racism, not to mention sexism, and the intersection is even worse. So we speak out, we are part of the solution, we are allies and leaders. And I think that that is the way we are operating in the county. We are not just talking about we are doing. And we are going to be there with everybody, not just in the streets, but up on the dais as well.
Supervisor Barger?
Well, I mean, how do you add on to that? I wholeheartedly agree. And for me, it's about listening as well. Up in my district, up in the Anlo Valley, this has been a challenge, whether it be with the housing and a lawsuit that was filed regarding racism up and how we were enforcing our Section 8 housing. But it's important for me to listen. I, listening to Holly, she experienced it, her family experienced it. So I'm going to listen, but I also want to be a part of the solution and build for the next generation. Because to Holly's point, we have the opportunity, but it's not going to be over because there are those that thought this was fixed, you know, when certain laws were put into play regarding voting, regarding housing, and yet it still is there. And so we have to continue to not only strengthen, but also check and recheck and continually to check to make sure that what we're saying is actually what is being done.
So the word gratitude has come up a lot, especially now in these particular moments. And it's certainly something that is so grounded in me. You know, I think yesterday I was having a moment because we have two adult kids who have graduated from college and should be living on their own, and instead they're living here. And, you know, it was just one of those, and my husband said, "This is going to end soon." And so we have to be thankful about the four of us together. And, you know, that happens, that, you know, a family happens, but it's going to end soon. And I was like, "I'm really grateful for the time that I've had uninterrupted with my family." So I'd like to end with going around the room. And actually, we'll start with you, let's see, Commissioner Kuhl, then Commissioner Barger, and then we'll end with Supervisor, perdón, 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 Supervisor. Oh, my goodness, how could I get that wrong, Supervisor?
Well, in some states, we're county commissioners. We just happen to be supervisors.
New York, for instance.
Right, exactly. So, yeah, so something that is, you're thankful for, something that gives you a sense of like purpose and hope. I know it's been hard recently. I mean, this, these moments of like, this country, what is happening with this country? I can't stand it. And then, of course, it's like, well, adónde vas? Where are you going? Where are we, where are we going?
Maria, I'm glad to end on this because, you know, people know, of course, I'm queer. I mean, I was out when I first ran. And so not just part of the women's community, but the LGBTQ plus community. We went through the AIDS pandemic and we were kind of the only ones really interested at the time, saving each other's lives, opened our own clinics, smuggled in drugs from France in our pocketbooks. And then, of course, getting, you know, the hell beat out of us in bars and arrested for no reason and nobody cared. It's not like we don't get it in our bones as well. But here's what I think is interesting in this pandemic because it's worldwide and never have I shared an experience with so many people who nod and go, "Oh, I get that." There are two parts to it. One is what I've learned, I have been denied in this pandemic and how important it was, and I didn't get it. Seeing people in person, living together in a room, not living, but working together in a room where we're, if we were all together in a room doing this, I am not using every part of my brain when I talk on the phone or even on Zoom. There is something that comes in through the heart. And I real, I didn't understand that until being denied that. On the flip side, the silver lining, I think, is what we have learned that we might be able to take forward with us, that gratitude for people, our place in a worldwide universe where we're looking at every part of the world going through this experience, our work remotely and what can be done remotely and not having to drive so much, what we can take from this, what we need to do to take care of other people. How many people are hungry all the time, not just in the pandemic? The silver lining is, I think, what we have learned in our hearts about how important our contact is and how important our place is in being there for other people.
Supervisor Barger?
Well, wow, how do you follow? See, that's why I hate following Supervisor Kuhl. I mean, she always dropped the mic. But, yeah, you know, I find hope in many places. And the unity of our community, for me, has been the greatest hope for me over the past year. And I've seen that. That has been the silver lining. You know, to work toward recovery as we distribute the vaccine, which is going to be more and more available, and seek to return to whatever normalcy is going to be. I'm reminded that our strength is truly found in one another. And I've found strength in my colleagues when I was chair because there were some dark times, but yet the strength I got and the support I got is what kept me going. So, you know, I'm looking forward to taking all that we took for granted and really changing the way I conduct myself, but also the way I view things that I maybe took for granted before. And so I'm excited and I'm grateful, believe it or not, for the experience over the last year that's really kind of allowed me to take a step back and recognize everything I'm really grateful for.
We are stronger than we think. Supervisor Mitchell, your final thoughts?
And I see that Emerald has appeared on screen, so I know time is tight. I'm going to try to be quick. First of all, I want to just quickly answer your earlier question about our liberation story. And my liberation story is reflected in Biddy Mason, a black woman who came to Los Angeles specifically as an enslaved woman, understood how to use California law at that time, was the first black person to represent herself in the court to defend her right to be free, who had a skill, used it, acquired resources, bought property. The Hall of Administration is probably sitting on a parcel that Biddy Mason once owned. There's a wonderful monument to her in downtown LA. And so when I think about what a woman like Biddy Mason or Fannie Lou Hamer or Rosa Parks, all these black women with a fraction of the rights, resources that I have access to as a black woman in 2021, that they figured it out and got it done, I know that I can and I will too. What I hope comes out of this, what I'm going to hold myself accountable for post-pandemic, and we will turn this corner sooner rather than later, is to remember the pace at which we were all forced to slow down and what we were able to experience and notice and feel when we slowed down for a minute, to drive less, for me to cook more meals at home, to have a sense of empathy and compassion for my family, friends and neighbors because I see them, because I'm not spinning 100 miles an hour. I hope that that's something that we could all take from this, that we see each other and that we are willing to connect and be there for each other. The way we've seen people all over this world rise up to pick up prescriptions for that elderly neighbor, I don't know, to meet and get to know that elderly neighbor. Those are the takeaways that I hope that we don't lose and I'm making a commitment to myself not to lose. That's my hope.
Thank you, Supervisors. I so appreciate it. Much love from New York. The last trip I made before the shutdown was LA. I think it may have to be the first trip I make as soon as I'm fully vaccinated. Thank you so much for having me. It's been an honor. Thank you.
Wasn't that panel fabulous? Thank you to Maria Inahosa and LA County Supervisors Barger, Kuhl and Mitchell for such a rich conversation. Your leadership is critical to advancing gender equity and we are so lucky to learn from your wisdom. On behalf of Mount St. Mary's University, I want to thank our distinguished speakers and our fantastic moderators for challenging and inspired conversations. Thank you to our audience members for joining us today on this, the last day of Women's History Month. This is a special year because at Mount St. Mary's, we're celebrating the 10th anniversary of producing the report on the status of women and girls in California. It is our hope that you continue to use the report as a resource to advocate in your sector and organizations. COVID-19 and the restrictions that come with it have been with us for more than a full year at this point. And despite the fact that there is light at the end of the tunnel with the promise of vaccinations, we are still living with the realities of a global pandemic. And the consequences of this pandemic will profoundly last for generations. This is why we need you to be vigilant. We need you to raise your voice when you and others need support. Your physical and mental health are vitally important. We need you to challenge your organizations to do better when helping their workforce manage the juggle of our work and home lives. We need you to lead where you can. This pandemic has pushed millions of women out of the workforce and we will need leaders to build initiatives and programming that centers gender equity in the conversation so we can continue to make positive change. Stay engaged, download our report and share it with your networks. We are counting on your passion, your energy and your voices to create the positive change we need in our communities right now. This concludes today's program. Thank you so much for joining us.